I welcome May first, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M. Before we get into roll call, I'd like to take a minute here. Like to say that. I'd like to introduce the new city administrator, the city of Elder Diallo, Nevada. Lenty today is her first day here. She's joining the city and she'll be taking over for Tony Root. He's did a great job for us and he's going back to the sewer plant. Give her a round of applause. Roll call.
Doctor.
President.
Collins.
President.
Blackwell.
Rosa.
She.
Rosa.
Peters.
President.
Oh, no, she's not.
A bunch of legions.
I have a lot of legions through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to see what what is the proper procedure regarding adding a item to the agenda? This would be a whole session and not only session. The mayor and council, so kind of be perceived by that.
We can't. Yeah, it's got to be closed. You can request for a closed session in the future, but we can't add it tonight.
Okay. Maybe know why this is being requested and I highly advise that we take action. Upon the request, who we last met? Two or three weeks ago, but nothing's been done on that matter. So I would have encouraged us to meet as soon as possible, please.
I'll get hold everybody and see what your schedules are.
Okay, thank you.
I'm making a motion to prove the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Be second by Collins to prove the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Name, the ayes have it. Public comment, is there anybody in the public that like to say something about anything that's not on the agenda this evening?
I want some students that didn't vote against.
All right. Is there some students for the government class here this evening?
Yes.
Could you stand up and state your name?
Uh, Luke Belkin.
Brendan Pierce.
Robert Hartz.
Thank you.
We've had a good meeting come to. We'll be out by nine.
Not ten, not ten, it's a short meeting.
Consideration proved the council minutes from the April seventeenth meeting, two thousand twenty-three.
Nobody has any additions or corrections to make a motion to approve the council minutes, April seventeenth, twenty-three. I'll check it.
Second by Peter, second by chief to approve the management. City council meeting, April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Name, the ayes have it. Bills payable. Does anybody have any questions on bills payable this evening?
Minor answer for the meeting.
Mr. Collins.
In your honor.
Non T.
Mr. Blackwell.
Mine's been addressed, thank you.
So do I.
All right, looking for a motion to prove that those payable.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Blackwell, second by Collins to prove the bills payable. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Name, the ayes have it. Stick say consideration and second reading of ordinance, two thousand twenty-three dash twelve, resoning the property at two hundred and thirty South Ninth Avenue from C one nasally commercial to C three general commercial. Jeff, has anybody called in on that?
No, there they haven't been received any.
Um, have we heard any more from the condo association?
No, we're.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Jeff on that?
This is the exact same as last time?
It is.
We don't add anything about sun setting in?
No, and if you guys would like that added and you have a consensus, I can line that up for the third reading if you.
I'm only one vote. I mean, that is just my opinion, but I'm not going to try to kill it for that.
No, that's up to you guys. I mean, there's one more reading, so I mean, if you'd like it added, it could be added. But if you'd like some kind of consensus, if you want to do that.
It probably would be added.
That's fine, you guys just make well, let me know what you'd like, like it to say and we could do that.
Looking for a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance, two thousand twenty-three, yes, twelve.
Make a motion to approve the second reading of twenty twenty-three dash twelve.
Go here, second. Second, motion by chief, second by doctor, to approve the second reading of ordinance, two thousand twenty-three dash twelve, resigning the property at two thirty South Ninth Avenue from C one neighborhood commercial to C three general commercial. Roll call.
Collins.
Aye.
Blackwell.
Aye.
Sheik.
Aye.
Peters.
Aye.
Doctor.
Aye.
Second reading of ordinance, two thousand twenty-three dash twelve, resoning to thirty South Ninth Avenue from C one neighborhood commercial to C three down commercial passes. This be the first in Leclerc intersection update, right? It's all yours.
Thank you. Um, if you got a chance to read the memo from about a week ago, I I won't attempt to rehash that. Happy to talk about anything that's in there or anything else that's on your mind, but I did slip on your desk right before this meeting chart. Just put it together today, it's current as of today, but I think it might give a quicker look back and hopefully a look forward as well. The one side of the chart, the other side of just the numbers that were getting dirt air. But basically what it's showing is that in the course of the last year, this is really how the the project has progressed. We started on May twelfth, twenty twenty-two. And and here we are nearly a year later. The blue line on the chart shows you the working days that have been charged. If you saw the memo, that's how this contract is is set up. They had originally two hundred working days to complete the work, which is essentially Monday through Friday, not a holiday and not a day where weather precludes you from doing what you need to do. So essentially you can get twenty to twenty-one working days in a month, depending on the month and the weather. And so that's two hundred gets you to a little older here. This is not not current in turn, this is not to the level of per day. This is really just a stash out every month. And so the line is smoother on this graph than it is in reality, because there were certainly weeks where there were three days of rainy weather where they couldn't work. That that's not graphically represented here, but basically what we're showing is from May twelfth, which was their contractual start, they had to start on May twelfth. Until about December ninth. They they were able to work productively. And so that's why you see the chart, the blue line essentially climbed pretty consistently. From December ninth until April tenth, that was winter. It was too cold, it was too wet, it was too snowy, it was too icy for them to do what they needed to be doing, which was paving. D O T has a rule, I mean, the city of Elders has a rule, you can't pave and freeze the weather because it will literally freeze the concrete before it ever cures and it will just revert back to dirt and sand. So the contractor typically would stop work on November fifteenth, or at least we would stop charging working days. And they could leave the site and say they're done for the winter. We did not allow that, so to speak, on this project. And so we said, as late into the season as weather will allow, continue working. And they did, they worked until December ninth. But after December ninth, they essentially did no work. They came back to the site on March twentieth, but they weren't able to be particularly productive. Remember then March, late March, it was still cold and wet. Uh, so they were installing pipes, but they weren't making any progress on concrete. But Monday, April tenth, that's when we started charging days, that's when dry weather came, that's when they started paving. And and to this date, this is accurate as of today, May first, they've used one hundred and fifty of their now two hundred and forty, two hundred and four, excuse me, working day. So that's just, that's progression of working days. So they have fifty-four days left. The orange line is construction dollars that the city has paid for. Basically work that they have completed that you have now paid for. It's not a perfect representation of progress on the projects, but it's pretty close, right? When they paid a hundred percent or you pay a hundred percent of the contract, they're done. When you paid zero, they haven't started and somewhere in between is where we're at now. You can see that orange line trends upward as well for those first seven months of this schedule. And then through the dead of winter, it flatlines because they weren't doing any work, we weren't paying them any money. And then here in the last month, really three weeks, it climbs upward. What is fairly telling is that the blue line and the orange line don't parallel each other, don't overlap. They were spending more days and doing less work. It's not realistic to say that it should be a perfect line, it's going to have to flow. But by the end of December, there was a twenty percent discrepancy. They'd spent sixty-five percent of their time and only done forty-five percent of their work. Not a good position to be in. The hopeful thing, the the helpful thing, if you look here in the last three weeks, they have done eighteen percent of their work in about eight percent of the time. So they are playing catch up intentionally. If you've been by during the day or even in the early evening, they've got two or three crews working. They did not have two or three crews working through last summer. They had one. That's a number of reasons valid or not as to why that happened, but that's what happened. The other line, the third line, the gray one, is street pavement that's been installed. And the reason why we throw that on there is because that's what's most visible, right? Nobody necessarily notices that another hundred feet of water pavement in that day or another manholes in the ground. What people see is the concrete on the ground. And this has even more starts and stops. If you remember, the very first operation of this project was to get pavement poured out, utilities back in and pavement back down in front of the high school before school started. Because all three entrances to the high school are on First Street, all three of them are in the way of construction, we can't shut all three down. And so the early months of this, the summer months of this, we're concentrated on getting that piece of South First Street repaved in front of the high school. And so that's why you can see the first month, they didn't pour any pavement because they were tearing it out, putting in utilities. But following two and a half months, they were going at a pretty steady clip. And then it flatlines because then they moved to first or they moved to Leclerc Road. They started installing utilities, they put down essentially no pavement for months. And then there the tail end between November, December, you can see they put in about twenty percent of the concrete. Flatlines through the winter and then over the last three weeks, they put in twenty percent of the concrete. So there there's no good excuse for why it it started and stopped. It was their choosing. And they're they're now catching up or trying to, because they realize that at the end of the day, we have working days, we have liquidated damages of fifteen hundred dollars per day. If we get to the point of no more days, they're charged fifteen hundred dollars per day, no more sands or bust. They don't want to be in that situation, we don't want them in that situation. The good news is from here on out, the hard part's done. The pipes are are the difficult part of a project like this, it's a hundred something year old intersection. We've got sanitary sewers, it's ten foot deep to replace water main, that's five foot deep, storm sewer that's five foot deep. And we are contending with existing sanitary water and storm sewer that has to stay in service while we put new in. High pressure gas main, high voltage electrics. Spaghetti nuts of of Peloton fiber central Scott, their entire network runs through that intersection. Hundred year old farm tile was there. So understand that there are challenges that you knew you were going to run it up. But you just didn't know where or when. That was part of their lack of progress and part of their lack of progress, and they will clearly admit this, I I think, is they didn't have people dedicated to this project. But the good news is the underground is done, barring one singular pipe left to go in the ground. All storm through is in, all water made is in, all sanitary sewer is in, it's testing, it's functioning, it's live, it's good. And so now they're down to surface work. And if you've been out today, they have done the subgrade preparation for essentially all street pavement left to pave. And so the dirt is graded, there's a subdrain tile to collect rainwater, there's six inches of drain wall rock base. Essentially, if they could paint everything tomorrow, they could, they can't feasibly from the standpoint of working from A to B, but there's really nothing stopping them from paving every single day. And that's what we've seen for essentially the last three weeks. I can't say this, every single day pavement has gone down, but just about every single day in the last three weeks, pavement has gone down. Today they poured a piece of West Leclerc on the north side by porters. Tomorrow they'll pour one of the porters driveways and some more of West Leclerc along the border. That's been our goal right now, or or that's their goal right now, is to get porters back to paved in paved access from the south side. Because once Porter's building has access from the south, then they can finish up Porter's north entrance. They really could be paving more First Street portions of it after this week, they reworked their paving machine, but you'll see that pavement go down very quickly. So the pieces of the puzzle are falling together, there's more work than the pavement, right? There's sidewalk, there's bike trail, there's striping, there's topsoil, there's grass seed. So to say that they're going to be done in in a month's time is not accurate, because there's a lot of that site work. But to say that traffic will be on the road, absolutely. Second Street, as you've seen, is is essentially ready to open, second and Leclerc. There's still light poles to put in on the side, there's still sidewalk, topsoil. But realistically, in the coming days, that and it will be open. It's just ports and driveways on that piece of the street that was keeping them from opening it today, but tomorrow or the following day, second and Leclerc can be reopened, which will help take traffic off the force, which will help the fire trucks getting in and out of Second Street. The next piece of the puzzle would be getting Leclerc Road open, just a two lane road east west through the intersection, you're not going south, you're not going north, but get folks back to their house. That's that's feasible in the next month. And then South First and North First follow. Bike trails, sidewalks, dirt, they they when when we reopen a stretch of pavement, that's not to say that you will never see another contractor truck on it. They'll have lane closures on the edges to do those things, bike trails, topsoil seating. But if you've seen it, it's wide enough, we'll be able to maintain two way traffic in it. The signal, I believe, was fully energized on Friday. So that's ready to go. Light bulbs have been up along South First Street for a while, those are in the process of getting energized. And as they move west, if there were some light bulbs, they'll be up ready to go. So I'm not here to, to, I guess, campaign on behalf of the contractor. It's been as frustrating for for me as it has city staff. You, I'm I'm sure as elected officials, we've got phone calls and questions, I know Facebook has has comments and concerns. Obviously, the effects of business owners have been impacted and fantastic to work with, honestly. It's never never an enjoyable experience to have no access to private property, but to the extent that they've been, I guess supportive and helpful they ask you, but the worst of it's over. But there's, there's still a couple months of heavy construction to go on before it's required. But that, any questions?
Yeah, I was curious with the light bulb situation.
Yeah.
Is, how is that playing out? Is there any price adjustment since we've already some of the original plans and?
No, is it the number of light bulbs or?
Well, the volt situation.
Oh, okay, so the traffic segment, so yeah, that's an interesting one. So I tried to explain it in the memo, but essentially we have three traffic signals, the actual red, yellow, the same light, three concrete bases for them. They're massive, they're three and a half foot diameter, nineteen feet deep, they'll never go anywhere. They have anchor bolts that are seven feet deep. And each of those three traffic signals has a different arm length, the piece that's actually horizontal that supports the regular green. We typically, when you're designing a traffic signal, you design it in a ten foot increment, so fifty foot, forty foot, sixty foot, seventy foot. The pole in the northeast corner, which is nestled between a high pressure gas, high voltage electric, was supposed to be seventy feet for the plane. The anchor bolts needed for that seventy foot arm is an inch and three quarters. The anchor bolts that were installed, an inch and three quarters, they were installed, inch and a half diameter, they swapped out one for the other. The solution to that is because the the poles are designed and and engineered and stamped and sealed by the manufacturer. And so they are responsible for meeting, I believe it's a ninety mile wind load, but a wind load for a traffic arm to ensure that it stays up. They have provided revised engineering drawings that show a sixty-six and a half foot arm is perfectly fine with the inch and a half diameter bolts that were installed. And a sixty-six and a half foot arm is longer than you truly need, seventy foot was just because that's how you order it. And so the proposed solution is to, it's a two piece arm. So what you see up there today, most of it stays up in the air. But the the farthest out portion, the smallest portion of it, will get replaced with a longer version than what's there today. And instead of a seventy foot long arm, it will be sixty-six and happy. The traffic heads, the red, yellow, green will still line up with traffic lanes, which is certainly what we want. And what the contractor has proposed is in light of the the cost implications of having a shorter arm, the hassle that it's called city staff and officials to deal with, they've offered a ten thousand dollar credit from their roughly two hundred and ninety thousand dollar traffic signal. We're recommending acceptance of that, you don't have a formal change order drawn due today, but it is a, it's a fair response from the contractor standpoint, I'll say from a monetary value, it's probably more money than what that last three and a half foot of the pole was ordered. But you will end up with a fully same same calculation, same wind load, same safety factors as the seventy foot arm.
Okay, then I guess my question is, I'm glad to see that they will do that ten thousand adjustment. But why, you know, did that go in the way it was engineered to go in? Then why in the first place did they say we need a seventy? And when they basically messed up, then they come back and say, well, we'll figure sixty-six is just fine. So why didn't they say sixty-six was good?
So the seventy, seventy came to us. And again, we we designed it in ten foot increments, that's generally what's made. I guess fewer parts at a traffic station manufacturer, if you sell them in forty foot, fifty foot, sixty foot, seventy foot increments. And so we needed more than sixty, but less than seventy, so you order seventy. So the change to sixty-six and a half was a way to ensure that it's still meeting the wind load and the the required calculations. How it didn't happen, honestly, the the poles are numbered on our plans, one, two, three. The manufacturer chose to number them one, three, two. And so two and three got swapped and that inch and a half versus inch and three quarter diameter went unnoticed until the concrete was set.
Well, I don't, the state cap, and I just want to know ramifications and the adjustments and I guess that's as I expect, so thank you.
Mr. President.
Greg, I mean, you and I talked pretty pleased today. The challenge I see going forward in the timing of all this is to get it open with the new alignments, we almost need striping out there to get it open, but we can't stripe it until the issue of grinding has done resolve.
Well, I I wouldn't say we can't, we're working through.
Can I put temporary markings on the pavement?
Yep.
Um, would it be any possibility to do that at night, so it's less of an inconvenience? For, because initially, once we put temporary, it's open enough. And when we put permanent paint markings, can that be done at night?
Potentially, there's temperature and humidity concerns, but in the dead of summer, those are less of a concern than they are today. Certainly something we can look into.
Could it also be kind of productive, we open up temporarily, then we have to close it right again to stripe it again?
Yeah, and so for what it's worth, that conversation is is ongoing to the extent of when Leclerc ready, when Leclerc Road is ready to open, why can't it be striped? I mean, it it is a similar operation to the way the city restrap them, right? You can restripe a line, mark it off, have traffic shift to the other side, it's just not ideal. It it lengthens the process, it puts people at risk because you've got traffic driving in a lane that they don't typically drive, you've got contractors trying to act by the same thing. So I agree that it's not ideal to try and do another traffic.
Could it be ideal to get east westbound Leclerc Road open as soon as possible to take the load off some of the secondary streets?
I'll continue that discussion, you will.
Okay.
Yes.
Community of here in the city was going. Seems like they have a history of hiring contractors, you don't take this seriously. Just to mention, the work has been done on Oak Street a few years back and our current contractor. Come and do the work, leaving, going to other communities to do projects that they deemed is bigger than the old bridge. But what what can what can we do? Who do we hold accountable regarding oversight of the projects to ensure that whoever be hired as contractors are going to be here for the long haul and they're not going to leave work unfinished. Through through the portion of the neighborhood, the Oak Street, we kept getting messages regarding that contractor doing work on interstate, doing work at the airport. This contractor here, I don't know their excuses, I'm not hearing about their 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 home and back and forth. And Greg, you you did mention that, they they said that if I if I heard you correctly, it didn't have people dedicated to the project. And I hear that that's that's concerning, that we as a council and the leadership of the city puts to trust within the contractor to complete a project and to complete it in a timely manner and has not given it up. This contractor, prior contractor, which is a separate company in a separate project. But to me, it's just, it's unsettling to know that when you hire these big contractors, they tend not to finish projects in a timely manner and they want to go off somewhere else where they feel that it's, this is doable, it's acceptable to leave the old bridge the way it is and we come back and get it when we have opportunity. So what what needs to be done to ensure that these companies are meeting their timelines, that they don't keep pushing us off? We're sent this becoming immediately asking, let's slowly completed, I give them projects and dates and then it's not completed. It 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 makes us, it makes us look bad and incompetent, like we don't know what's going on. So so what do we need to do internally to ensure that there's proper oversight regarding these contractors and these are getting done in a timely manner?
So the balancing act with the contract time is the more we constrain the timeframe that they can work, potentially the fewer bidders you get or the higher expenses you get, because they appreciate, they want as much flexibility as possible. We don't give them free reign, right? We we said at the beginning, with with honestly, the D O T Office of Contracts expertise, two hundred working days is a reasonable amount of time to get the project complete. It's not an inordinate amount of time, it's also not a a reasonable amount of time for this working overnight and as three ships. But that's the the, that's really the way to constrain the contractors to just constrain the contract timeframe. You'll say instead of two hundred working days, you have one hundred and fifty, which is roughly two months' time less. The challenge with it is if you go too tight and you you are going to exclude some contractors that don't have that ability to do it in the timeframe. We cannot change liquidated damages, at least not to the extent that we treat them as a penalty. Liquidated damage is not a penalty, it's a recognition that the city is and the citizenry is out money when a project goes beyond its contract timeframe. We agreed essentially as a city that two hundred working days was a reasonable amount of time, but two hundred and one is not. And so that's why liquidated damages and and why we agreed on that is is somewhat fuzzy, but basically it's that we can stomach the the pain and hassle of a project that goes for two hundred working days. But we don't want it to be two hundred and one, we don't want it to be three hundred. The D O T comes up with the fifteen hundred dollar liquidation damages on a project like this. And that's their attempt to to quantify real costs, it would be that the city would put out. And that's for observation, administration, all the paperwork. The the detours associated with traveling public, in theory, there's a time, a a time cost to have people detour. The D O T comes up with fifteen hundred dollars and it's not an unreasonable number. We can't make that fifty thousand, that's a penalty and and you can make it that, but it'll be challenged in the court and you have to justify why there's fifty thousand dollars of cost per day. We could offer a bonus and for a short period of time, we talked about that, the I seventy-four offering bonus for early completion. And you can say be done by December thirty-first, or you can say be done one extra working day. And you could you could, you can make that an actual extra payment to the contractor. It has to be big enough that it's actually worth their while, fifteen hundred dollars a day might not be big enough for them. A million dollars is probably big enough for them, but not necessarily something you want to stomach. The D O T does say on projects such as this, where they're administering them, where you think they're money, they will not participate in the bonus. If you're paying a bonus to the contractor, it's a hundred percent city money, there's no eighth fund or anything like that. And so liquidated damages can't drastically be changed to become a penalty. A bonus, if it's just not a cost you want to incur, isn't an option, constraining the timeframe is, but we have to balance that with trying to get enough contractors. If you remember, we we did this in in April of twenty twenty and got one bid. So we rebid it and got two bids. And so that's the challenge is is constraining that timeframe too much, you you can find yourself in a situation where nobody's, nobody's got the willing, willingness or interest to do that work.
Well, I, well, with the, well, thanks for the explanation, everybody, but when when the contract is being awarded, it's, it'd be nice to, if we can have some oversight. Some boots on the ground out there to see and to question contractors as to working days and a reliable working days that are dry, why aren't they there moving dirt, playing whatever they need to do? Because because you you mentioned, I think, March, March the twentieth was looked at and then somebody per se said that they couldn't work. Well, I know on March the twenty-second, they were working, they were moving dirt, but they was only there for a half day and then decided to leave. It's been kind of sketchy, it's been back and forth like that is what I've seen, what were the members of the community is saying too. So we just need to ensure that we got proper oversight of these contractors and ensure that we gave you the contract, the work needs to get done, it needs to get done in a timely manner, quit blowing us off, so.
And and we'll take it, sorry, they are charged the working day if they could be working, whether they're there or not. And so there were days where they could have and should have been working, but for And so there were days where they could have and should have been working, but for whatever reason, they were not on site. They were charged for work effect. So that, that does happen. But I, I understand your point and there were a number of days in the weeks where there weren't many people on site doing work.
Right, understandable. So.
Um, I guess I'm a little skeptical because of Big Bird passed with some of this and like, that's what Blackwell said. Reference that. I kind of see this letter as maybe just a little, uh, soft touching or kind of setting the, the premise for, uh, coming in and having appeal if we do have some penalty days. Kind of sitting around like, wow, this, 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 this happened and this happened and this. So do you see them completing this on time or not at this point?
I do. And they can't, to be perfectly frank, they can't come in retroactively and say, well, July twentieth, twenty twenty-two was kind of wet. So we don't think we can charge a working day. They agree on a weekly basis that this is what was charged. And so they can't retroactively come back and say, no, we want to change stuff. So they have agreed that a hundred and fifty is what they spent to date.
And have we looked at our calendars and we have the same hundred and fifty working days that?
But a question too, as far as oversight, we have a construction meeting every two weeks. And every two weeks, we have asked them where they're at.
Oh, yeah.
I have to say, Adrian, there isn't, there isn't like, nobody has ever checked with them. You know what I'm saying? And we have a, we have a progress meeting every two weeks. So in every two weeks, we ask the contractor how far they feel they are, how many working days. That's the first question.
But we shut hetero, so it's not.
We are tab, yeah, sorry. We are tabulating the working days. We are saying, based on the weather today, you could have been working. Whether you were not, you could have been working and that's one. And then every week they have to sign off and agree. And it's not a particularly contentious ordeal on a week-by-week basis, right? You know if it rained on Monday, but you don't remember if it rained six weeks ago on Monday. And so that's why it's done on a weekly basis. We come up with a number, they agree to it, and then it's, it's set. It's not changing beyond that.
Yeah, no, it's, you know, we know you guys are keeping up and we're talking about contractors. And again, with the size of Lurch compared to some of these other things, it's like, you know, we're, you know, low on the total ball and they get to us when they can sometimes. And to a point, that's understandable and it works out and, and they do things in a timely fashion, the way it's supposed to be done, there's there's definitely not a problem. But if there is, we watch, we handle the fairway at that.
Right. And, and what we're saying is historically, these concerns keep happening. So this is concerning.
Part of it is the nature of low bid work. That's, that's a legal requirement. Whether this is a DOT job or not, you are, you are responsible for taking or you are required to take the lowest responsive responsible bidder. That's the, the letter of the law. Responsive means they checked all the boxes and made all the signatures on the bid. If they did what we told them to do on bid, they're responsive. Responsible means they realistically can complete the work. That's the fuzzy part because you can't, can't numerically quantify whether they're responsible or not. It's a judgment call. And if you do determine a contractor to not be responsible, they were the lowest bidder by price, but they weren't responsible for whatever reason, including past history. You're welcome to do that as a council. You are subject to them making appeal. And so that's why it's not a set stone. On a project like this, it gets even harder to do because really the DOT administers that process in terms of determining who is responsible. And so it is, you're right. It's, it's come up before and, and unfortunately it'll come up again because we are always dealing with contractor that has a low price to win their project. And so they will, they will look through the plans, they will look through the specs, they will see that they have two hundred working days or a hundred and fifty, and they will base their price on that. Because they are solely going to win or lose this project on their price. And it's not, I'll, I'll say it's not a not a team atmosphere in that position, right? They're here only because they were cheapest. They will spend as much time as they can to get more time and more money and once they have the contract. And so it's, it's unfortunately barely common. The schedule is, is one of the things that's always, that, that becomes an issue.
Right. And unfortunately, it ends up tied with that. As we all know, the cheapest isn't always better, stuff like that. Once we do that, we can add large projects moving forward. We just need to do a little more oversight among the city to ensure that that they're, again, taking us seriously and get this done in a timely manner and not making excuses as to why it's not being done. So that's all I had to say.
Right?
Um, for the record, we all have to note that they are still within their working days. However, we don't like progress. They are still within a lot of working days. One thing that in my opinion got sideways a little bit is when we first required First Street from Leclerc Road's how to be done in hopes of the high school. And future, when we run into multiple corners and all that, our next step should have made it, and maybe it was originally, if I remember right, they have to get east-west Leclerc Run Road done first before they tear out the next section. What complicates it, makes it look like a mess is Leclerc Road and North First are being tore up at the same time. It would have been a little smoother, in my opinion, if they would have completed Leclerc Road, get that open to traffic, then tear out North First Street. We can't go back and change it at this point, but I think wasn't it originally designed that way?
Generally speaking, there was still some storms around North First Street that has to go in just because North First Street is a little point. And so you have to stray storms or back up to Leclerc. So it, it could have been done differently, but it could not have been completely a situation where nothing on North First Street was disturbed and all of Leclerc Road was complete. There would have been a little bit of overlap, a little bit of narrowing of the lanes thing for that. Yes, I, I think it's fair to say the contractor bit off more than they can do by removing the amount of pavement they did back in June and July and then not getting anything off it. They were optimistic that they could get Leclerc Road open with better weather they could have. But I mean, they worked until December ninth. It's later than most, but I'm sure they felt well short of getting Leclerc Road open.
They could have gotten open with more crews.
I just think it'd be best if I did not also mention at this point that in the past with some of these projects, Brian and his department, his crew, many times bent over backwards and did a lot of things to facilitate the contractors to help them get done in timely fashion. And it was things that they, they wouldn't have had to do, you know, adjusting schedules and doing things like that. So I just want to know that, you know, this, this is a contractor issue. It's not what, what people are doing.
Thank you.
So can you give us some sequence how you perceive it going forwards?
Yep. So Second Street and Leclerc will be open this week. Leclerc Road can be opened to two-way traffic in the next month. Whether we reopen the South Lake, the South First Street, at that time will be dependent upon how quickly they can get grinding and start being done. Otherwise, it'd be better to just make Leclerc Road a through street. And then First Street following in the next month or so, still with work going on on the sidelines with trail sidewalk, topsoil, bank of that nature.
Oh, it'll be a tight inner, two hundred and five days.
I think ultimately with topsoil and grass and all that, yeah. But I don't know that, that the pavement will be open before then unless they choose to do something that is not productive.
Will the punch list be outside of like two hundred and five days or included?
Within reason. If we required something that, I mean, if there's a lead time to get something, that doesn't count. But if we say this piece of sidewalk, that's a crack in it, you need to replace it and it's a dry day the next day, they need to replace it. So they don't get, they don't get all this time for punch list.
One word, accountability.
Right.
Mr. Collins, any questions?
Great. Um, I know that there was an issue with the bike trail, that there were vehicles that were on there and things got cracked. Is that going to be taken care of in the two hundred and four days also? Um, this was by a state farm, I believe.
So there's nothing left by state farm for the bike trail. So we've got, yeah, we've got all that covered. There were a few panels on the south side of First Street, kind of behind the city shop, four or five panels that were cracked. Those have been replaced.
Okay, very good.
Assistant Chief?
I have to make kind of first.
All right. Thank you, Greg. Seven eight, considerations regarding the street closure for Maloney's on May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three and July eighth on two thousand twenty-three for two car shows. Uh, Tony, can you, my understanding of this?
Yeah, similar request from previous years. Maloney's have been closed, basically the sectional road. Between them and the lovely yard, they wouldn't be closing any intersections. Um, they've always done a good job of getting the barricades up and getting them down, even really after the event. We should be able to make consideration this time for the May one will be, of course, the detour. Pressure that's a little more busy than it used to be, but I don't know what it's like on the Saturday afternoon, so. All they considered, they've done a good job. They've done very respectful and cleaned everything up soon.
The Deputy Chief, you have any concerns regarding this particular request due to the construction?
The only thing I can think of is that's Elbridge. Does the chamber put any vendors on that side of the road? I don't believe in years past they have, or maybe that's something that they've asked them before.
Before this is approved, right, yeah.
Yeah, I don't believe, that's not even on their closure list at all. So it'd be just a little stub addition to what they already closed.
Yeah.
And as long as I think it's cleared out well in advance before the moonlight chase or setting up and being compared to that. That way we won't have any issues because then my thought is if we don't get it done right, they're going to be wanting to move their cars out and it's going to make a bigger mess. As long as we, I think knowing the time that they want to stop, it would be a good idea. But other than that, I don't have any issue with the days.
Finally, hands low and it's second. Maybe we should move it to stretch along there.
I just kept it that way before.
You want to do a motion with, uh, including this with checking with the chambers, make sure that doesn't interfere with them?
Okay, with her.
Well, the chambers already come in and asked us for street closures for the moonlight chase.
Right, in case they have a vendor that want to park there, do we want to double check?
I think so, yes.
When the kids run and fix objects? So that's usually seven thirty.
I think there is the first kids race. And I mean, one thing we can. I think they start blocking it off for the moonlight chase, right, around seven o'clock. Do you remember Brian, when that starts? Oh, do you start getting put in, isn't it since thirty, seven o'clock?
Right, five o'clock, five thirty.
I just asked Brian, I think that already is closed for the moonlight chase now, I think.
It, it usually.
I think as long as he's working with the chamber, it might be okay.
Yeah.
But they have the first rights because they've already been granted permission to have it closed.
Yeah.
The one thing we can do is short, instead of eleven A to seven P M., we can make eleven A to five P M. or five thirty P M. So it doesn't coincide with the chamber, but we need to have the chamber.
Did Mr. Black, do you want to make that motion with checking with the chambers, group of, so checking with the chamber? So go ahead. Motion by Blackwell, second by Docree to approve the Maloney's street closure on the dates of May thirteenth and July eighth for two car shows. With the addition of checking with the chamber to make sure there's not a conflict with any equipment or vendors on that day. Always in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Name, ayes have it.
And please, you know, Tony said the chambers already asked for that ahead of time, so who's going to?
Be, get that. Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Um, seven, the consideration authorization of the elders police department proceed with the K nine program, purchasing the K nine and upfitting the existing squad car to the K nine squad car. Chief Assistant Chief Andrew Lilly, could you explain this to everybody a little bit?
Yeah, I'm going to try to make it short and sweet. Uh, right now, we're in a position where we have seven with, uh, four two four records, getting seven twelve updated as a K nine unit. Um, I just mean that we were prone all due to make forward with that. Uh, he's probably in the next couple of weeks, he'll take the squad for a week. He's going to totally gut it out. Uh, he has to update, like, the load, wiring and systems and that because it's extremely old. Some of the new items that go in there will aren't available yet. So uh, speaking with Keith and James from four two four, uh, with seven twelve, you know, in the shape that it is, we should minimum get five years, if not seven years out of that by maintaining the K nine unit, which has approximately the lifetime of the K nine. Uh, it's five to seven years. So that squad should be able to stay in service because it will be assigned to just one officer, which is the K nine officer. We're also in a position, uh, Deputy Chief and I met with, uh, the trainers and owners of Skeeter Creek Cattle's down in McComb. Uh, or Bama, I apologize. Uh, and we've decided to go with that company. It's a ten-week training course. Your next course available is July thirty-first. Uh, I'd like to be able to get that class, uh, set up for, for us in a way that we just reserve a spot. Uh, right now for the course, uh, they supply the K nine, which we're looking at at German Shepherd. And with the training, that's the dog and the officer. For the ten weeks, there's about seventeen thousand dollars in that, including the dog, purchase of the dog and everything. The nice thing is with Cedar Creek, uh, we've checked a lot of references and it's been very good feedback reference this company. And also this company also, if our officer goes on vacation, they take the dog free of charge and board it. And they continue to work with the dog on officer's on vacation, which is good. I also, Andrew and I have two officers that we're down to right now for our decision, which is Officer Jacob Pastus and Officer Brandon Pay. Uh, we're hoping within the next week or two, they have a decision on which one's going to get the K nine. And then once we make that decision to open up in Fulton, Illinois, is, uh, River City Defense Bureau. They've already offered to donate a whole kennel and the cement slide to the officer's house. So that's not going to be any cost to us. They didn't even claim where they've been in instead of to officer's home. Uh, with summertime being busy, I can't start getting all rolling on this as soon as I can to get some of that stuff done before on July thirty-first. And that way it doesn't interfere with us during the summertime being busy, it's blocked. I'll let Andrew talk.
Insurance and some other stuff referenced the K nine. Um, so going to reiterate, reiterate what the chief said, currently according to the chief's calculation, we're around uh, seventy thousand nine point four forty-four, uh, with donations from citizens, businesses, um, and things like that. Your services are pretty good. Uh, the community's been very supportive. Uh, businesses have been outstanding. Um, and, as he said, the term, the purchase of the K nine will be about seventeen thousand. That includes the training of the dog, the purchase of the dog and the training of the handler. Uh, the good thing with momma being so close to the K nine handler will travel back and forth. So there will be no, or more than a stay at a hotel, food, things of that. Uh, so that's where they're going to help with their costs there. Uh, that clinic reached out, um, earlier, I'm sorry, last week, um, and some services that they're going to offer. Uh, I won't name that clinic as of right now, uh, as we have not made a decision yet. Uh, but that would include no-cost services for vaccinations. Uh, basically, it's the same thing that so we can get the same kind of discount that they give. Uh, they've been outstanding. Uh, so to be, uh, at no-cost vaccinations, annual supply, monthly heartworm flea and tick prevention, uh, wellness and blood work, intestinal parasite tests. Um, they recommend true paying a pet insurance for any dog with receive or any surgeries might be needed. Um, that comes out to about thirteen sixty-seven sixteen a year. It's got a zero dollar deductible. Um, and like I said, that is true paying a pet insurance. Uh, the vet clinic is also going to, I work with Karina to provide free dog food. Uh, so that way it'd be a foster with, uh, the taxpayers, you know, the police department will come out and tell them.
Which Karina is also already told us that it would be free dog, free pet dogs for the world, for the K nine.
Um, the other thing is um, in the sheet and the packet, the packet that you guys have that the chief put together, um, you're going to see, I think I finished the report. It's the startup equipment for the K nine. So that includes, you know, fracking line, leather crank compartment, uh, leather muzzle, bringing the food in, uh, K nine mop box that the, uh, So that includes, uh, you know, fracking line, leather crank components, uh, leather muzzle, bringing the food there, uh, K nine mob looks at the, uh. Uh, Cedar Creek cattle requires for the K nine handler to breed, uh, that comes out to six forty one thirty five. So in total for the purchase of the K nine, if the city council chooses to approve it, you're looking at seventeen thousand six forty one thirty five for. The startup equipment of the dog, purchase of the dog, training of the dog, and training of the handler, is what the price is.
They had a couple of more things too, is, uh. With the dog in the officer, after we go through the certification once a year, uh, Cedar Creek. Kind of will conduct the. Regulate, the regulated, uh, certification for the state, uh, every year and. Um, so we don't have to worry about that, they've also offered that. Because the officer, the K nine has to take two days out of each month and do training. Uh, they actually offered that, the officer, the K nine, you'd be able to go down there and do training down there, which. They'll be able to work with the officer, the K nine, so if there's any issues or anything like that too, and that would be free of cost during that time. Uh, they stay behind their dog and they just want to make sure that they continuously have hands on to you to help out, to make sure that they're giving us. The best quality dog there is in hand, so the K nine also is going to be a dual purpose K nine. It is not gonna be a bite dog, it will be a dog that will search for article searches, which you're talking archives, uh, you're not gonna use explosives. Uh, any items like that, but it will also be a dog that will, if we have any missing person, it'll be able to track. Uh, but it'll also be a K nine that will be able to take to any events or take to the school. And kids will be able to pet the dog, anybody else would be able to pet the dog. Uh, the direction of the handler, uh, but we'd also be able to do some demonstrations with the K nine for any programs throughout the city. Uh, that's some of the stuff that we definitely promised a lot of the citizens and businesses that we would do, uh, from all the donations we received. We did receive a very large donation from one family. Um, and the family asked to remain anonymous, but they asked that we named the dog after. Their aunt that passed away and left the money, and her name was Marty, so the dog is already gonna be named Marty. Uh, and the family just asked that every year, they have an opportunity to see the dog, give me a react with it, so. I figured for the large donation that we got from them, which more than the taste of the dog, it's all we do.
Uh, the last two things I will reiterate, um, porter insurance, um, will cover the K nine liability for the K nine. That's gonna be around a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty dollars a month. Um, and I also have spoken to True Panian Pet Insurance, just to make sure that they would cover a police K nine, and they would do that. And all this is covered by our donations.
Yeah, thanks, just looking at. Uh, state, it appears to me there is an unfortunate that is, that is left over, uh, some orages here. Uh, if I, if I'm looking correctly, it may be, you know, maybe I'm not, but it appears to be around like thirteen, maybe thirteen thousand or so. With that differential, is there opportunity for the community to, to give, give further to support that particular cause?
So, absolutely, yeah, uh, we've been asked by several members in the community and businesses that are able to give donations every year. Uh, this is with the K nine program, and that's our whole intention as well as continuing to get donations every year for the dogs, so, yes. Uh, monies that are left over, we're gonna ensure that we keep monies left over, work on the K nine fund to assist even. The following years.
And the, the golf outing that the chief and Gary Johnson have been working on, as of right now, looks like that will. Be a good, uh, chunk of change for continuing of the annual cost of the K nine for next year.
Perfect.
Um, also for the, uh, federal labor safety act, you know, a K nine handler has to be compensated. Uh, speaking of departments around the area, what, and the K nine officers would be on ten hour shifts, he will work nine hours that. Ten hour there will be to for pet and daycare vehicles, so it shouldn't cost any extra to.
Well, I thank you for educating the communities, well, regarding the usage of, of the K nine. You know, just, just branch it out, what you gentlemen are doing, what Gareth is doing regarding the. Community policing within Eldridge and developing that report, any misconceptions regarding policing in the community. Especially the K nine, it's not, not a bite dog, it's gonna be out in the schools, not one of here in Eldridge, but all in North Scott, if I understand correctly. Um, it'd be to report to kids, develop that trust with that, just like any officer. That you trust them, don't be scared, don't be afraid of them.
Yes.
This dog is officer, don't be afraid of, is here to help you, so. So I, I, I appreciate that concept, you know, what you guys are doing, what you're taking to educate the community, not only kids, but adults. You know, all together as we move forward, you know, if, if it's. You know, for some circumstance, you know, we don't want to, you know, particularly see its, its usage, you know, but, you know. It's gonna be there for, for troubling times, and it's gonna be a, 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 a dependent member of the force, you know, I might, I might, I might add. Um, I just, well, well, like I say, as a, as a city, I, I thank you guys for looking at every. Fiscal revenue to support this, but I believe us as a, as a city and, and the council, we need to be cognizant of the fact. And, um, and, uh, just research the longevity of the program to keep it up and put that in the budget as we move forward. For our next fiscal, so we can support this new, this new officer.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
But you. Uh, yeah, I just have some comments, and, uh, I've always had concerns with a few things, uh, and I've also said. Commendations to you guys, that you researched this, you thoroughly, you presented well, you've done everything, you should have, um. My concerns are future funding, um, you've got some good plans, but. You know, this, this is the enthusiastic time, this, everybody's on the bandwagon, uh, most things, two, three, four years down the line. Enthusiasm goes and it's well, maybe they'll take care of it this time and whatever, um, but hopefully we can count on our citizens. Uh, number two, I looked into, uh, research and the number of K nine units nationwide per capita. And, uh, the number of K nine units with, uh, the county in Beddord from Beddport. Uh, we are in Scott County, we're way, way ahead of the curve with K nine units availability. So one of my questions, personal questions is, is this a little, uh. Too soon for this, and the big picture, would we be better off just looking at, uh, another human officer? Uh, down the line in your future, but those are just my personal concerns. Uh, I think enough of my people that I represent have been sold on this, uh. Bi- biomass of the earth is domesticated animals by far over humans, so we do love our animals as pets or to eat. And, uh, and there's a lot of good with, uh, interaction with kids and things like that, so. Um, like I said, those are my personal concerns, but as a councilman, um, I'm gonna vote yes because of the people I represent.
And just to address a couple of your concerns, uh, for, I mean, as far as the funding for the K nine every year, we're looking at approximately. Between five and seven thousand dollars a year to operate the K nine after this first initial startup. Uh, a lot of research that we do, what a lot of agencies do, especially smaller agencies like ours. They'll do golf outings every year, once a year, just to do a fundraiser for the K nine program, or go host. Some other type of community event to raise money for the dog, but they also use. Forfeiting money that they get from drug seizures and stuff like that, now, within our departments. Our officers at home go out and I can tell you now, we've had several forfeitures that we're working on right now. Just from what our officers have been able to do, what an officer can do is nothing compared to what a K nine can do. And I can tell you, Highway sixty one has become the main road corridor between Milwaukee and Dubuque down to. Uh, the quad cities or to Interstate eighty, which is the main road corridor throughout the United States. Now, when it comes to K nines being available, you're absolutely right, they have of course got four dogs that we, Beddord has. They have one right now, they have one right now, they are gonna do a second one because they're gonna have one in our training. In July, if, uh, we're able to send our dog down there in July. The problem that you run into is, these are larger agencies that are very busy, and a lot of times they're busy using their dogs, and we try to call them many times. For these K nines, and we can't get them, very seldom are we able to get another K nine from Danfor to Beddord up here. Um, sheriff's department, we can get from time to time, but a lot of times they're down in Danfor or over in Beddord helping them out because. We have a fifteen minute window, maybe twenty minutes at the max to get a K nine. To the location where our officers are, especially on the traffic stop, we can't have it within fifteen to twenty minutes. We're done. Uh, so, you know, unfortunately, we're not gonna have a dog in twenty eight or seven, but at least during the times that we have a K nine working the streets. And our plan is to have the K nine work in a lot of hours where it's our busy peak hours, uh. And it'll be at those times, we'll have a K nine available, but we also have that available too, if we have a situation where we need to call our officer out. If we have a missing child or, uh, we've had times with missing elderly people that was traded out and. It cuts down a lot of time for us trying to find people in that situation, but we also have several occasions now. Uh, times are ten, we've had several, uh. Alluding, uh, scenarios recently, and guns have been involved, and we've, uh, recovered some guns. There's been a couple of them where it took a while to find the guns, and we're fortunate enough to be able to find them. But having a K nine that can assist in tracking through weapons and stuff like that, is a big part, because one of our big concerns is if somebody throws a gun out the window. And we can't find it, our concern is somebody else, especially a child getting a gun, and somebody getting shot, or that child getting shot on accident. Uh, and that stuff happens, uh, so, but in all reality, a K nine. Doesn't replace the human body as an officer on the department, but it does add on to the department, it does give us a. An extra body because the K nine officer, he's got a part, and he's got the most reliable partner. That K nine ain't gonna let his partner down, so that's pretty big, but I hope that addresses some of your concerns.
Yeah, we've talked, we've talked on some news. And like I said, you know, it's, like I said, you guys have done, uh, that, but, you know, like I said, okay, these commitments, uh. Food, vet services, you know, whether it's, uh, management changes or vet changes, or while it's really neat, people are, get a lot of attention. Cause they know I'm doing this five years down the line, still shouting out to this, and nobody gives a hoot that I'm doing it and stuff, and. You know, just human nature.
You know me, I'm determined.
I know you're, I know you're. It's Robert, you know, just looking out for our taxpayers.
I got you. Um, couple of questions, when you currently call a dog from another agency, is that covered under a twenty eighty agreement? Or is there additional fees, terms?
No, we're, we're, we're under a mutual agreement, okay, good, we're on both sides of the river, but right now, we're not going to down the side.
Well, I'd like to keep you on the island side of policy.
No, absolutely, you don't have to worry about that right now.
Um. And currently you have funding through donations, if we ever get to a point where they slow down their funding. Have you had any discussions with the school district about participating in part of the cost of the dog and the handler?
Uh, I know in years past, there's been discussion, uh. But I haven't had any recent discussions with Mr. Studie, Mr. Studie, now, I'm sure that's something that if I ever needed to, I could discuss with him.
Okay, and then in your four two four quotes, bids?
Yes.
Um, one, I mean, one question, that squad can't be in that bad shape. I mean, other than a good hand washing or something, but you've got five hundred dollars in there to buff and polish it?
The buff and polish is because they had to pop out, we had to change the decals on squad because we're actually mandated to put certain decals on the squad. They're now, uh, the market of the K nine unit works washing, so the buff and polish is because they're gonna have to make sure that gets all cleaned up. Real well in order for our decals to stick properly and we don't have to lose those, because I don't wanna lose about twelve hundred dollars in decals. Because we didn't do a good job on getting it cleared, cleared off.
And can't use decals that are on there and just add the K nine decals to it?
Uh, no, because, uh, right now the decals that are on are too big, so where we have to put some of the. Because we have, uh, good margin decals that we have to put in certain areas right now, and so. And to do it through a company to order decals, we can't just order. Certain things on the way that comes as a set, so we're there, but it's just better off to replace this, because we have to get it all set.
Yeah, is that squad been marked for a long time, or is that one of the ones we just recently marked?
Been marked for a while.
Okay, it's seventeen, I believe.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing is. The Gamber Johnson Council, computer mount, armrests and cup holders, do they already have computer mounts and all that, all that in it?
The reason why, uh, that's all being changed is because of, uh, the cage, the type of cage going in. To the squad for the K nine cage, uh, a lot of that in the center has to be changed out because one of the. Features on that within the kennel is for the dog to be able to get through the kennel. Into the front, into the.
And I'm sure you're changing the frequency of the sirens because of the dog.
We're changing the frequency, and that's something I've been wanting to look at, uh, Beddord Police Department has done really well, uh, with theirs. And they have the high low, which actually is, people are able to hear that a lot better, uh. It, it's in better qualities, so I figured on this, since we have our siren box on there is not working that great, it's because it's pretty old. Uh, I figured with that, that would be our experiment, that's my little frequency, but it's gonna have all the other sirens on it too, so. It, it, that's just a programmable. Uh, part that you put in it, but it's got a suspension box that has to be on that, you gotta replace any of this.
Yeah, why don't you have a better traction?
I believe the, one of the T C. Yeah, I believe the low action kind of vibrates.
Yeah. They call it a tone.
You can actually feel the, the vibration of it, so it's just not the way to warm.
So if you ever been in Beddord and heard their squad cars, the handles, it's just a different sound, but it's very. It's, it stands out, and you can hear it a lot further away, it gets your attention.
Okay, my final question, the two possible candidates for K nine officer, your handler. Uh, do either one or both live in Oak Ridge?
Neither one do.
So that squad will be going all over the city every night?
You have me living in the city, I can't be the K nine.
Yeah, I think none of our officers besides you will be. I'm the last one.
And Robert Deuce is one of them.
Robert, Robert is all over the officer. I've been really looking at Robert, he can't ever be down with, they're older, but. Yeah.
Okay, that's all the questions I had.
All right, thanks, Brian.
Your honor, um, I was wondering about, uh, SOPs for the dog and the handler. Um, how are you gonna make those up and where are you gonna get those from? So there's different amounts for the handler, uh, for hours and the handler, and also for the dog, if it's going to be for a life. Or if it's gonna be while deployed, um, are we gonna get a copy of that so we can see that, or?
Yeah, we can give you a copy of policy, that, that's not an issue, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, we can always give you a copy, I mean, one, once we're completely done with it, uh. We have, we're gonna make a few tweaks because I've been in touch with them, or their K nine programs go well, so we'll probably add some, we'll. Add some more stuff to it.
And when you look at Danforth, and you look at the sheriff's department, there's quite a few differences, that's why I asked, which one you're gonna go with?
I, I prefer Danforth, uh, they've been in the K nine business for quite some time, and they have a real new K nine program, so. Uh, with Chief Lyle, him and I have talked, and he put us, put actually Deputy Chief in touch with their, uh, supervisor, the K nine. So we're getting actually all the bite forms, if there's a bite or narcotics forms, if we find narcotics, anything like that. There's all these forms we have to have, and actually, and who's been working, yeah, we'll say, it's happened, put on our own letterhead.
Mr. T.
I see a lot of possibilities here with the K nine. Um. Just the money that you generate by drug. Just the money that you generate by drug seizures and stuff like that. I'm all for the program. And I think that, uh, if we have one here in Eldridge. At least it'll be for Eldridge. Um, Davenport was always pulled out. Well, before Bednorf had theirs, they went to Bedndorf. Um, they went all over and a lot of times in Davenport, the dog wasn't there when you needed them. So, I'm all for it and, uh. Then the money that you will seize will probably. Almost pay for the dog, um, when you have drug seizures. And, uh, you know, you'll, you'll have donations coming in. And I don't see any downsides to this at all. I, I think the people out here will appreciate it and, uh, the dog can be used more than. Uh, well, because Davenport had one dog that they couldn't take anywhere. Uh, and you better be careful because it would, it would bite you just walking past it. But, uh, I like the idea of not, no bite. That doesn't mean it won't bite.
Doesn't mean it won't.
Because that dog will protect the handler and, uh. I just, I can't see a downside to it at all. That's all I have.
Okay. Yeah, I think.
I just said, just to, just to follow up with that, definitely there, there's needs there. It's not a, it's not a want, it's a need. It's been something that we've been discussing off and on past three, some years regarding, regarding this. Um, looking regarding longevity of this and the expertise of the handler in, in the training for the canine officer. Uh, is there, is there a need with their expertise? Is there a need to compensate them additionally for their salary? Due to their expertise and if so, has that been right? Has that been allocated within the budget?
No, and that's part of their, uh, where on the ten hour shift, they get that last hour where they're not working. They're, it's maintenance for the dog and that's the downtime that that officer cannot love on the streets. So that's kind of their compensation plus, uh, there's gonna be up to is for a lot of overtime for them, I'm sure from time to time. Um, so, no, I don't think that's ever been an issue. I've never seen when I worked in Rock Island where the guys, I don't think the guys are getting. Extra money or is that worth it either? So.
And, and that's something that, that the union could possibly say, hey, in the future, if we're gonna keep this program alive, we'd like blah, blah, blah. But obviously that'd be up to the council to collect and bargaining and then off the path.
Canines are subject to a lot of different things. It's a natural handler. Much as a bulletproof vest for, uh, like that cost.
Right now we have a couple of companies that actually I had a company real out to me from South Carolina, I believe. Uh, there's a couple of companies right now that I've been talking with that are wanting to donate the staff and bulletproof.
Cause as it grows, it'll probably be adjusted.
Uh, for what? Probably, they are adjustable. Yeah, and by the, the dog will be.
The one thing I will add is what most working departments do when this canine retires is that handler will buy that canine from the city. But, um, that's an amount you guys can decide usually is for an hour. Um, for so your, your record of a transaction, right? Uh, but that is something that you guys definitely.
Put that dog with somebody else.
And that, that has happened.
That's happened, but usually if it comes down, you know, if you're looking at seventy years, a lot of times it's time for the dog to retire. And they don't, they open up because they have all certain canine developed that. Close relationship to save them away to pull them apart. I haven't heard too many times where the officer doesn't see that dog.
Right. With that all said, looking for a motion to improve authorization, the elders police department proceed with the canine program. And first seeing the canine and upsetting the existing squad car to a canine squad.
So we're.
I'm sorry. Motion by, yes, Brian.
Just for the record, there's no tax dollars in this.
Right. Um, add that to the motion that, uh, from the record, that this is completely being purchased with the donation funds. That the police department have acquired for the canine and equipment fund. Motion by Blackwell, second by Chief. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks. The ayes have it. Um, I've seen we have a few department heads here. Brian, could you give us a little bit of a date?
Sure. Um, I'll start with a couple of the park board updates. Um, if you guys know the, Tony was able to, since he was part of the North Catholic League. Um, the T-ball group is down, I guess, but they have money and they decided to, they asked Tony where, what they could do with it. I don't know if that was more of Tony's thing, but, uh, they donated five thousand dollars for the T-ball field at the Crammer Park. So we, um, hired a subcontractor to put in a new backstop, you know, and thirty foot of fence each way. And the city crews dug it out and basically we built a T-ball field. So it's fifty foot basis. It's meant specifically just for T-ball. We don't want fair kids in there. Had some concerns from the neighbors as they're windows were gonna get knocked out, but, um, so it's a neat project. It's turned out good. Um, we need to add up all the numbers. Uh, there's sidewalk and some, uh, concrete work for benches that needs. Still needs to be done, but I think we probably should wait till after July for the new budget year. Um, a monowated irrigation system, we started that last week at Hickory Creek. Um, there's a couple of valves that are bad, so we're having to have them replaced. Um, Jeff and Scott Campbell applied for a grant for phase two of the irrigation.
Yeah, um, that was a SCR grant, so we'll, that'll start by the end of the month, I believe. If we've gotten it or not, but we applied for half the funding for what's left.
And then also the North Scott Soccer Group, I think, committed to mash some funds.
They, yeah, they, whether, whether or not we get the grant, the soccer club's gonna throw in ten thousand. Um, so at the very least, we'll have ten thousand of the second phase cover.
So we'll have that. We'll see how that goes. And then also down in Sheridan Meadows, you know, we applied for grants, uh, Keith Schmacklot did. And he did get that grant for new lights on field one. So the poles were bad. And if you guys don't do that, so the old poles were taken out, the utility department put the new ones in. And we're just waiting for the final electricity to be done. Um, so that should be done this week. So that'll be, uh, three big projects at the park boards now, uh. And we also, if you remember, put a new basketball court in at Centennial Park. So the park ward's been very aggressive with getting big projects done, so I think we're getting organized, uh, or staying focused and, you know. I think, uh, Ashley's part of it. She's been really good helping everybody stay focused. Her favorite is Sanctuary Gardens. If anybody's been over there, it's a nice park. Um, I'll keep it short. The other thing is we did a final walkthrough for, um, our stream bank stabilization project. We did last summer or as of late last fall, I'm sorry. Um, so they didn't get the seed in last fall. We seeded it just two weeks ago, uh, erosion controls in. So the one part of that project, when I met with the DNR is. So, hey, we need to put something in the next newsletter or advertise for that app, but.
So we're gonna do fifty percent of the cost if somebody signs up for that.
Up to a thousand.
Up to a thousand, yes. And well, the people that have had, that have had it done are very happy. So I'm a Ryan and you were part of that and you did yours. So that's a good project. I think we just need to try to get more people aware of it.
On the city website or where can I find that?
We had it on the city website. I don't know if it still is actually.
Uh. No, it was, it's all started when James was here and he handled a lot of it. Uh, advertising, he had a whole Excel sheet of people wanting to do it. And so we actually sent out to everyone on the list. We weren't sure that we were gonna be able to do that, but with the funding we were. Um, I think it counted today. Was it one, we? Four residents that done it. Brian was one of the, um, landscapers and he sent out postcards to people. Like he's really, um, gone above and beyond to get people to do it. So, um.
But the gist of it is it's, this money isn't there forever, so they're not gonna just let it bust right out for ten years. So we need to be organized and try to get it spent, but, um. We did some other, uh, stuff on the streets, but just, you know, since Leclercy Road is closed, we made sure we got that crack sealed to West End of. Uh, Leclercy Road from Second and Fifth. Um, we're gonna try to get that painted before they open it up, so we're not taking our lives in our own hands again this year. Um, but I don't have anything else tonight. If you guys wanna ask me some questions.
Uh, this, I've been my sanctuary gardens is spring. What's the status on that?
Um, I believe benches were going in. We marked benches to where they're going to go. Um, we met with the landscaper and he designed a landscaping plan for it.
For that circle or for?
No, so the circle we are waiting on, um, someone has. Will, put it in their will to purchase the gazebo once they pass. Um, and so that's kind of unbold until that happens unfortunately.
Could be a year again.
Uh, so we have park board next Tuesday night, so we will present the landscaping design to them and hopefully move forward with that.
Yeah, it was originally at one point, but that was just getting going, the boyag department at Dorf Scott was gonna donate plants and some maintenance. As a project, I think for the students and I just.
They, we did talk.
Think anything has happened with that?
No, they have reached out a few times. Um, they were wanting to do a berm and we're just not sure, um. Maintenance. We don't really have anyone to take care of it after they install it.
Well, I thought it was part with the boyag group wanted to do or they were something, uh.
Yeah.
Projects or classes.
So I'm not sure where we're going on that one, but we're just looking right now for around the benches, just doing the entryway. Some landscaping and just kind of defining the park itself.
Hey, Brian, Crandall Park, um. You're gonna do concrete. Can you look at putting a pad in for the porta potty down there? I mean, for so many years it sat right next to the drinking fountain. I've been crying about that.
And it's there. Yeah, that was part of our ad grab. We will do that, try to get away from the drinking fountain.
And you might have to pour like a little pad or approach for the service truck to get up to it.
But.
Or something. Take, just take a look, but it needs, it permanently needs to be moved away from the drinking fountain.
But I think our long-term goal would be to try to put some bathrooms, not fancy ones, and some of the parts, right, to eliminate the.
Yeah, Scott Campbell and I are front coast Scott County Park. Uh, they've got a lot of concrete ones. And you actually buy off cut out of Wisconsin. Um, the, the non-plumbed ones are pretty reasonably priced. Um, so they're looking at, I don't know if they'll get it this year or not, but within the next couple of years, I can see a couple of permanent. Really nice concrete outhouses going in. Um, that, that some of these are candles discussed, suntanials discussed and get away from outhouses, those parts.
But we will get it away from the drinking fountain.
The water doesn't taste very good on a drink. Tastes like shit.
Brian, the biological irrigation system, is that something that's gonna fall along the lines of the, uh, contractors install those? Cause that's a city cost.
That's, so what happened to Adrian was that, um, only pressurized the system and there's a, there's the city pressure and then on top of it, there's a pump. Well, I believe that there was some dirt in there. I would think with you and so that, the two valves at the end of the two runs, farthest ones away have dirt in them and. And, uh, it ruined them. So long story short, no, that isn't a city cost. It'll be on the contractor to fix it.
And, um, regarding street bank stabilization, and we looked at the creek that runs near. Dollar General on the east side there, it appears to be especially where the downspouts come out. And there's a PVC pipe, I'm, I'm assuming it's a, a salt pump line. Appears to be a lot of erosion on that, on that creek bed. Any spot regarding looking at that segment of that creek bed regarding stabilization here in the future.
There hasn't been any discussion, but we can definitely look at it. And, you know, I mean, this was, um. I guess it wasn't grant money. It was SRF money, um, through the, the loan from the sewer plant expansion. Do you remember that?
Yes, yes.
But I think this was a good place to try it in Elm Green Park and then across the street. So if it's successful, we can go to those areas. But we could still put some rip raft or something there in the meantime. I wasn't aware that it was doing that, so.
It appears to me that there's been something added, but it's sinking in, watering away, especially where the downspouts are. Going in that salt pump line coming out, it appears to be some type of wooden device placed there to prevent early erosion. But probably would need something permanent there.
Okay, stop that. We'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
Collins, do you have any updates for your first day back to the sewer plant?
Um, so with the administration side, then we're gonna drag on, uh, closing out. The South First Street Trail, which is the player road trail, uh, we're working on. Uh, trying to get the Townsend Farm Trail, um, not to bed, maybe this fall yet. Uh, we want to go from the kind of road to this street, um, along the pipeline. Um, for the sewer sites, normal operation. We got some valves that, uh, we're going to be replaced. Uh, three of them are from nineteen ninety-four, so we got our bodies worked on those, but there's one from the twenty eighteen project that. Um, has failed, so we need to get out and see what, what caused that. Um, then the last thing is, uh, Brian and I are working together to get the storm sewer system mapped on our GIS, which I sent you guys an email about. Um, that's gonna be a big, big accomplishment to do this summer, uh, was required for this program. We've got our five-year, actually, it's not five-year. Next year, there's a five-year inspection, so we need to make sure that's done thoroughly completed before the end of the year.
Do you guys have the time or do we need to look at maybe hiring a intern that's going to school for engineering? That might be able to do that during the summer to, and you guys can hit the high, high points they don't hit or?
Um, it's one of those things where you really only have one chance to do it right. So we really rather do it ourselves to know that it's accurate because once it's, once you start to get off a little bit. You never know what you can, can't trust anymore. So we, we do have the time. We'll make this.
Okay.
It'll be a joint collaboration between.
A couple of summers ago, Brian, we had hired an intern or summer help to do that. Helps the summer with the ratio and he spent all summer shipping branches, but that was the goal.
If you need something else, I'll leave. Thanks.
No, we didn't have anything to add right now. Everything's, uh, going forward pretty well for the department. Guys are enjoying having the full staff department, so the horrible hell that we're getting harder.
How's the canine fighting?
I mean, I do have one thing.
Yes.
Uh, one, I just wanna say thank you to all the members for the approval this evening. Uh, the other thing is during that ten week of training, um, I do, would like to invite any of you to go down. And check out the dog in action, the handler in action. Uh, we can set up a date to do that, but I just wanted to throw that invite out. Uh, that goes for, uh, city administrator and assistant city administrator also.
Brian, do you have anything to add?
Well, I told the students we'd have them out of here by nine, so. It fizzled a little bit, so I'll make the motion for adjournment and get them out of here at eight thirty.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Segby Peters. Adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
That's nice of you, Tom.